Good evening, this is the August 3rd, 2017, meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission in Town Council Chambers. It is now 7:03 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will commissioners introduce themselves, starting on my right?
Bruno Mayini, alternate.
Jonathan Formicello, alternate.
Kathy Lindstrom, alternate.
Leanne Brosnan, Commissioner.
David Townsend, Vice Chairman.
William Porter, Chairman.
Mike O'Reilly, Second Chairman.
Olagresta, Planner.
Scott Schatz, I am Lady and Group Director and Camera Engineer.
Rebecca Wood, please.
Thank you. General public participation, is there anyone who would like to address the Commission on any issue that's not related to a public hearing? We have none, move on. I have four general appointments, we have none. Public hearings. Public hearing for Timmy Hill Road has been put off until our next meeting on August 24th. We have one new public hearing. I'd like to read the rules for public hearings. There are two sets of microphones for both public address and recording of proceedings. Due to the need for recording, it is important to stand at the microphone at all times and speak into it loudly and clearly in order that everyone in the room can hear and to capture what is being said. Individuals speaking from the seats will not be heard and will not be recognized to speak. Order of the hearing of an application. Points of order and responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Applicant and/or representatives will present the application and will answer Commission questions. The floor will be open to those in favor. The floor will be open to those opposed. Floor will be open to general questions or comments. The floor will be open to the applicant who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal after which discussion will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. No comment shall be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the Chair. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the Chair who will determine if an answer shall be provided and by whom. There shall be absolutely no discussion between speakers and audience. The Commission has no intention to limit the right of any person to speak, but asks that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If something has been said before, the Commission would invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speakers. At no time shall there be displays of emotions such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar noise. This is critical as this hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. A vote or demonstration by show of hands, standing by the audience, or similar action will not be recognized. All parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel in need to talk, please step out into the lobby. All speakers when recognized must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. The Chairman reserves the right to cut off discussion if it is not relevant to the application or is presented in an inappropriate manner. This is a legal proceeding much the same as what would occur in a courtroom setting. We request that all parties observe the proper decorum that would be observed in that setting. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. If you have a need to use these devices, please leave the room and use them outside. Okay, first up, Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut. Notice, public hearing to be held August 3rd, 2017. RAA 2017-07, File 99E, Easement Right-of-Way Setbacks. Planning and Zoning Commission Propose zoning text amendments amending certain setback standards related to easements and rights-of-way within all residential and non-residential zoning districts. For the applicant is Mr. Olagresta.
Just the exhibits first, as normal. Exhibit 1, proposed text amendment, which is proposed by the Commission. Exhibit 2, notice to regional planning agencies. Exhibit 3, notice to adjacent municipalities. Exhibit 4, response from West Cog, and their response was basically no comment. Exhibit 5, Fire Marshal comments. Exhibit 6, Town Engineer comments. Exhibit 7, Building Official comments. Exhibit 8, Nogga Tuck Valley Cog Response. And Exhibit 9, Metro Cog Response, indicating no regional impact. As noted in the public hearing notice, this is a zoning text amendment which is being proposed by you, you as the Commission. This was brought to light to the Subcommittee on Regulations by a developer that does a lot of work in town. And this issue has come up before with regards to additional setbacks that are required for internal easements and right-of-ways across property, which would then be equal to that of the street frontage. And in some instances presents some issues and problems. If this is an old regulation, it doesn't have much need, so the Subcommittee looked at it and recommended the removal of this requirement. And at the same time, we cleaned up the language to be consistent throughout. This was brought to the full Commission and you sent it to a public hearing. This requirement occurs in nearly all the districts. The RF1, the RF2, RF3, the RR District, those are the four, and the HOD District, those are the residential districts. It also occurs in the B1 District, the B2 District, as well as the industrial districts. Basically what it's indicating is if you have a right-of-way or an easement that goes through the property, for instance, you have a common driveway between two properties, it goes down the middle of the two properties, that in addition to the side yard setback that you normally would have, there's now additional setback that is of a certain dimension from the easement line, which would be interior of the property line. So that pushes the, you know, the setback further into the property. From a street perspective, that makes sense. From a common driveway or an access easement, that isn't always that important. At least that was what the rationale was with the Subcommittee and the full Commission. So the revisions that we made are similar in each case, or the end result is the same, which is basically to eliminate this extra setback. And as I said, the language in here is also cleaning it up so that from section to section, we're using consistently the same language. So that's why you'll see some changes, in other words, to the various sections that we went through. And that really is, in essence, if I just take one for example, you know, in each instance it's more or less this, there's this extra setback requirement, and we're taking that out, and then this language, instead of using the word property, we're constantly using the word lot. And where we're referring to the specific yards, we're using similar language, side or rear lot. And you'll see that language kind of fly through here, you know, to make them all consistent, taking it out, using the same language by adding or deleting some words. And we're doing that throughout the different sections. But in each case, they're doing the same thing. And that's the essence of the... Oh, and as far as the commentary from the referrals, we either got responses that this is no regional impact and no comment, or the sufficient time for the notice has gone by. And if you don't receive anything, that's the same thing as having no, no comment.
Okay. Anyone have questions?
I have a, just a, a wondering, kind of more so than even a question. On page 3, you talked about, you know, the industrial districts easement, and you mentioned they have a shared parking that would not be included in the business. It's just a statement.
Where?
Page 3.
This?
On A.
Yeah, I'm looking on the screen. You mean here?
Forty-three point 10, I mean 4.310? It's in the text.
Yeah. This, this right here?
Yeah, one line up.
Well, that's existing language that has nothing to do with the amendment that you proposed.
Okay, so that's, that's the reason, it would not necessarily be excluded from the business zones, it's just not appropriate to add it at this point?
Well, that would be a whole nother substantive issue for you all to ponder upon.
Okay.
That is an exception that's allowed in that industrial district. It probably would not make sense in the business district, but again, that's not really related to the substance of the amendment.
That's it.
We have?
No questions.
Yep, Michael?
No.
Alright, I have none. Just see if anyone from the public would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who would like to oppose this application? Any general questions or comments? Okay, thank you all.
So unless the Commission has any other questions or comments or wants to make any other changes, I would suggest you could close the hearing and deliberate appropriately.
What say you?
Close.
Hearing's closed, thank you. Next up, Site Plan Development. SDP 2017-03, File Number 123, 233, 235 Monroe Turnpike Conversion of Existing Residents to Professional Residents. Will, what do you have for exhibits?
One sec. Exhibit 1, Site Development Plan Application. Exhibit 2, Project Narrative. Exhibit 3, Engineering Report by the applicant. Exhibit 4, Eight Plaged Plan Set. Exhibit 5, Town Engineer Comments. Exhibit 6, Building Official Comments. Exhibit 7, Fire Marshal Comments. Exhibit 8, Health Department Comments. Exhibit 9, Town Planner Comments. Exhibit 10, Application Re-submission with Attachments. Exhibit 11, Truck Turning Sections. Exhibit 12, Revised Engineering Report. Exhibit 13, Updated Plan Set. Exhibit 14, Response to Comments by the applicant, ART comments. Exhibit 15, Updated Town Engineer Comments. Exhibit 16, Bond and Estimate Form. Exhibit 17, Updated Town Planner Comments. Exhibit 18, Response to Comments by applicant. Exhibit 19, Revised Truck Turning Sketches. And Exhibit 20, Updated Plan Set Comments. And I'll note the last three were received today, just before the close of business. We'll be adding on the dais.
Yeah. All set?
Yes. Please introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Casey Birch. I'm a civil engineer at Soli Engineering, and I'm here today representing EE Equities for the proposed site development of 233, 235 Monroe Turnpike.
Mr. Birch, you're aware that your last set of plans was dropped off here about 4:30 this afternoon?
I am. We did receive comments last week, so we tried to rush as fast as we could to get to you guys some, but my, my presentation will go through each comment, and, and we did revise all the plans, and I, and I will go through that with you tonight, if that is okay.
Well, I'm gonna leave that up to the Commission.
Okay.
As you all know, there's a cutoff of last Wednesday with the material to be submitted for us to review at this meeting. Do you want to proceed reviewing this, this information that we received this evening? Or do you want to postpone this so you have time to review it?
I guess my concern would be, the, the public would not have had a chance to do any kind of review, right? Because these comments would have been available for the public to, to look at prior to this meeting?
Yes.
And that, that's not possible then. So people would have looked at them three days, if they wanted to decide to come to the meeting and speak out, that's not gonna happen. That's one, one concern.
That is a concern. Any other comments?
I can start with Dave.
I want everyone to weigh in on this.
I'm fine with going ahead.
Bruno?
I'm fine with going ahead, also.
Jonathan?
I agree with Dave.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with going ahead.
The, just, just to clarify.
My input would be just that, you, you know, you certainly can go ahead, just, you would, you would leave the hearing open and then the, what's that? Well, okay, well, the meeting would stay open.
The, the point is that we're gonna be presenting information that we have not had an opportunity to review, so we can't really give good feedback or comment. However, the, the majority of the commissioners feel that we should proceed with it, so we will. But Mr. Birch, please relay this to Mr. Soli. We don't want information tonight of the hearing.
And I understand that, but we did receive the revised comments after Wednesday, I believe, last week.
Yeah, the comments are the review of yours re-submissioned material.
Right.
And our comments are not reviewed, they're really for the Commission.
Okay.
And if we ever do that, we'll never really...
Okay.
Ever get to a meeting.
Right, right. So...
The initial comments were in...
Right, and you guys have the initial comments.
And that's why you had the initial review and a second review, that's, that's what we do that for.
A, a lot of it is just adding more plants per the planner's comments, so it's more of a plus than anything, so. I, I do apologize, but we, we worked as fast as we could with the time allotted that we had. General oversight, this is Monroe. We, the site is located at the southern portion on Monroe Turnpike. A little close-up right there. We are south of Purdyo Road and Spring Hill Road. And this is the existing conditions plan. As you can see, we're bounded by Route 111 to the east, office complex to the south, and residential properties to the west, and a dental office to the north. The site is located in LOR District and offices permitted in this use, and our project proposes to create office space in the existing residential space that's there now. Site currently consists of two residential buildings. Building 1 is right here. It's a two-and-a-half story building, which we are, will be maintaining as part of this project, and it has a footprint of approximately 1,100 square feet. The building 2 in the rear, which we will also be maintaining as part of this project, is one-and-a-half stories, and it also has a 1,100 square foot footprint. Site is accessed to the south via Monroe Turnpike, and it comes into a site drive slash, I guess, parking area for the residents, all the way up to the garage right here. This one-story garage will be demolished as part of this project. This is the site plan. As previously mentioned, the project proposes to maintain the two existing buildings and convert them into office space. Building 1 will consist of approximately 1,976 square feet of gross floor area of office, and Building 2 will consist of approximately 1,104 square feet of gross floor building of, of office space. The access here is, we're still coming in to the south here, we did widen from 10 feet or 11 feet, the existing site drive to 24 feet to accommodate the office use. We are parking to the south here, approximately six, six spaces in the south, eight in the north, and five here for a total of 19 parking spaces. The handicap space is located over this area with a walk to get to the building 1. And you'd have to cross over here to get to this ramp to get to building, building 2, you'd have to cross this ramp to get to building 1. Signated loading area per, that's a new comment that came in. We did have it, unfortunately, we did have it here at first because we were trying to maximize parking, but we're, we're able to remove two spaces to accommodate a 15 by 30 loading area. The, we're providing two ADA ramps here, we're extending the deck out on this portion of Building 2, and we're providing stairs on the other side. For Building 1, the main access will be through the south side entrance here, and the wheelchair ramp will come up to the existing porch area, which we are maintaining, and both ramps are a wood, of wood design.
Sorry, Casey, did you say you're enlarging the porch at the building?
We are, we're extending a, there's not a porch, it's a step up, but we are putting a wood deck there to, as part of the, as part of the ramp. Okay. I'll note that. We originally came in with a dumpster enclosure pad. Unfortunately, that was within the building setback, and we revisited the actual use and the applicant, we believe that an office use of this small, of square footage wouldn't require a typical commercial dumpster pad and enclosure. So what we're doing is providing residential trash bin and recycling bins in two locations. So you'll have a trash bin and recycling bin for Building 2, and a trash bin and recycling bin for Building 1 located in this area. They will both be covered with shrubs, which I'll get to when we get to the landscape plan. We are also proposing a monument sign to the southeast, located north of the site drive in this location right here. And we're also maintaining the existing walk to the building from Monroe Turnpike. The site ranges from elevation of 465 at the, at the site drive here, and to a high elevation of about 471 in the northern corner here. It proposes to increase the overall impermeable area of approximately .12 acres. This is consistent of more of the site drive here, I mean, the site drive and the parking expansion in the back and in the side here. Approximately half the site, there's a high point right here, approximately half the site, or the majority of the site, but it's, it's pretty split, will drain into the water quality basin that we are proposing on the northeast side of the site. And the rest of the area will drain towards the road, like existing conditions, but we added a catch basin at the driveway to capture all that runoff and make it go through a hooded outlet and into the municipal system in, in Route 111. The water quality basin will attenuate the peak flows from the, from all storm events as well as capture the water quality volume to treat prior to leaving the site. Utilities, which is kind of hard to see on this plan, but it is on this plan. We are proposing to maintain the overhead wires that come in for electric and cable. We are proposing a new water line, and we will be abandoning the well located in this area right here, per the health code requirements. And we will, we will be maintaining the existing septic bleaching field as is, and that has been approved by the Health Department. There are fuel tanks that will be maintained on the site. This one's in a covered area for Building 2, and we are proposing to ma, keep that. And the other one is located within the basement of Building 1, which we will also be maintaining as part of this project. Soil erosion sediment control plan. We are providing a riprap pad which we could extend even further if the Commission required to satisfy the construction within this area. The area down here is already paved and won't have that much runoff that we see, that we foresee. So we didn't, we didn't put the, the anti-tracking pad right at the road. The sediment trap will be in the same location as the basin and will be scarified and converted into the basin when, upon the time of completion of the project. We're providing silt sacks at the proposed catch basin and the outlet control structure as well as the catch basin in the existing road. And silt fence will be running along the southern property line, along the front, property frontage, and along the northern property line. All this is high, and everything will flow this way anyway, so, which is why you don't see any silt fence in the, the northern half. Planting plan. We'll be providing more, there's a slide later where it is the response to comments section, so you'll see a drastic difference from what you guys have already looked at to what we are proposing now. So I'll probably just hold off, but for now, I think this location is a dogwood, and we got a new oak and a maple, and then we are providing shrubs along the front and along the basin, and a flowery tree, I believe, oh, maybe that's a dogwood, sorry, in the front as well. Lighting, we're providing two light poles to light the parking lot areas. They will be a decorative picture of a crane on, and one is located here, and one will be located on this side of the parking area. We are requesting to maintain the existing wall-mounted fixtures on the buildings. They are underneath the canopy, and they're just, they're decorative to the house as is, as a colonial look, as it is now. We will be removing the floodlight that's on Building 2 per town request, per town staff request. Some of the elevations, the, so that's the easterly elevation of the front of the building is right here for Building 1. This is just looking northerly at Building 1. This is looking behind Building 1. As you can see, this is the existing porch that we are maintaining. We'll be maintaining all, all the porches and, and decks for this building. And this, this is looking at the, looking south, the side of the building. All this area we, the basin and landscape area.
Just so there's not, not a misunderstanding, that, I would normally call that the north elevation?
Yeah, it looks like we, we were looking, yeah, it is an northern elevation. This is looking towards, sorry, you're, you're correct, yes. And this is Building 2. This is looking towards the front. This is looking towards the side with, and this is right here is the fuel tank area. This is the rear of the building, which we modified because we did put the, the garage in the previous submission, which you probably saw. And then this is the other side of the Building 2. All this will be maintained. This area, we will need to provide a ramp with wood deck and stairs coming down this side.
What is that that we're seeing in the west elevation?
Here?
No, down, over that.
I, I'm not sure. Probably, it looks like wood on, like a stockpile of something. I, I couldn't tell you, to be honest.
That's not, it's not, it looks like a pad of some kind, perhaps?
Uh, maybe, I don't, I honestly, I'm not sure.
Because it doesn't show up on any of your other comments.
Right. Yeah, it's, if it's not on our survey, I'm not sure when that, if that is a slab, when that was poured, it was not poured when we were out there.
Okay.
All right. Response to comments. This is looking at the August 3rd, 2017, today's date. I'm not gonna go over the cross-out ones, because they were satisfied. I will only go over the, the new bolded ones and talk, talk about that. First one is provide separate entries for each side yard. Provide for each building, but not only for the southerly side yard, also need to include the northerly side yard for Building 2 also show the corresponding measurements of 37-foot southerly siding. We updated our plans to, to satisfy that comment. The zoning compliance table has not been advised to show the number of stories. We updated our plans to provide that. We excluded the footnote in the compliance, that's the next comment. I'm just trying to go through this fast because it's, a lot of this is just administrative that happened to the plans very quickly. Show and label the corresponding landscape buffer area on the plan. The site label plan has been advised to show the label and corresponding landscape buffer area. Update footnote and provide required interior floor plans. See related comments below. Not adequately addressed. The tax cards are not a reliable data source and are not used for zoning compliance. Floor plans are required and needed to demonstrate interior use and layout as well as ADA health, building, and fire emergency compliance. Our response to this is interior use and layout as well as ADA health, building, and fire emergency compliance will be established during the building permit process, as a building permit requires all of those items to be compliant as part of the review process. The current application is requesting approval for the change- The current application is requesting approval for the change of use in accordance with the zoning regulations and has provided sufficient parking based on the information readily available. If it is discovered during the building permit process that the plan is somehow non-compliant with the zoning regulations, the applicant will come back before the commission in accordance with the applicable regulated requirements. Now unfortunately, our, our client does not have a tenant currently, so what we had to do was use the floor plan that we, the tax card area that we had in the livable area, we considered office space. Now, if that is modified for any reason, we obviously will have to come back to the commission if, and for an application amendment if need be. But unfortunately, at this time, we cannot provide a floor plan to you without an actual tenant and interest in the property.
Do we have the square footage?
We do, and I used, I used the livable square footage in your tax card. And again, if that changes, we will come back.
I think you should do the existing floor plan, which is what you're going to need anyway, down the road.
Well, we went, we, we didn't include, we didn't include like unfinished basement and stuff like that for office use.
Again, the zoning requirements require you to have floor plans. And right now, if you don't have a tenant, that's fine, but you can just show the existing floor plan to show what it's like and where it is. I mean, we shouldn't wait for the billing department process to figure out one if there's health and safety and ADA and issues, but possibly we need to know what, what the floor plan is.
Is there any parking?
Right.
It's not just about parking, I mean, the requirements to have the floor plan. So we know what the interior is like and those other issues. And then the square footage relates to the parking.
We don't know the square footage either, though.
Well, we don't have it, we don't necessarily have it. I mean, it's not going to be off by that much.
No, it shouldn't be, and we are, we are conservative with, with, we consider office space. I know that in the past, we've broken up things through storage and office and stuff like that. We just use the entire livable area as office.
It is not convenient breaking up.
Okay. But I, I, I think we are overparked by six spaces. If anything changes, I don't, we will obviously come back to the commission and...
I think what Will is trying to say is your application is not complete. We need a floor plan, so.
So you want us to go?
You're going to have to provide a floor plan.
Just of the existing as is right now, okay. All right, I will, I will.
How is it, is it your intention to keep a full-sized kitchen or just a break area?
I, I, we don't know yet. If, if, if what we have to do is go and measure what's currently out there, we, we will do that to satisfy the commission, but right now, we can't propose anything new in the building as is because we don't have that information.
It's understood.
The row for a dedicated, oh, add a row for a dedicated loading space is required per zoning six point one point four A, as mentioned earlier. This is the plan that you had before. This, the office didn't even have a, a ramp at the time. And it didn't have a loading area. We were parking, we were doing temporary parking of like FedEx trucks or whatever office, like mail trucks and stuff like that. We don't anticipate any loading of goods or anything here, so it'd be, it'd be probably an SU thirty or less parking here. That didn't suffice, so we modified the plan to have the loading, temporary loading area in its own designated space here. The truck will come around, I'll show you later with a truck turning template and it'll back up and then it'll come this way, does a three-point turn and then drives out. As you can see, we, we provided a ramp along this way, an extended deck and these stairs on this side.
The, just so the commission knows, I have always asked for a turning template that didn't involve backing up and certainly also doesn't involve cranking the wheels all the way in a static position. And for obvious reasons, you have people coming in and going out, truck backing up. So my comment would normally be that that space needs to be deeper so that you can pull out of there one sweep to the right and go down the driveway.
Right, and as you can see, see where the ramp is for the other side. We had a ten-degree radius and you're right, it seemed, it seemed pretty tight. You still could make the three-point turn in this one, but you didn't really have much space to do the three-point turn like your comment requested. So, sorry. So we increased that radius to twenty and it brought it back a little more, so.
All right, well, I'll take a look at that, but I, I mean, just looking at it from here, doesn't look like there's enough room.
It's still a three-point turn. There's no way on site that we could make an SU thirty, which, which is probably bigger than a FedEx truck anyway in, on this, on the site, but you guys do require an SU thirty turnaround, so that's what we tried to do. Unfortunately, it was with a three-point turn in this area.
Even if you angled that?
You'd have to take the whole ramp out to make it, if it does come.
If you put a space in here and you angle it and you bring it back to almost the property line back in here, you have enough room to do it. We could talk, we could talk about that offline, you know, you're not going to finish up tonight, so.
Dumpsters no longer proposed, instead residential trash and receptacles are proposed, which I mentioned earlier. However, these facilities also need to be screened, detailed as such should be provided. So this is the location that we're proposing the receptacle in for building one. And this is the, that's the, right here is the location and we are screening with evergreen shrubs along the back bit. So it will be screened from a no turn pipe and partially from.
Why are you putting it right on the curb?
Well, we didn't provide a sidewalk along here, so, I mean, to get access, you would have, you would have to go in the pavement to, to access that.
Access from what?
To access the two receptacles and put them, place them back and.
I think we put them on the back of the deck and added a step on the back of the deck.
We did have them here and, oh, okay, you didn't, you didn't like that, sorry. Right here, we, we can, we can modify that location.
Put two steps, it gives you right to the air conditioners for maintenance and backyard for maintenance?
That, that, that's fine, we, I'm sure that our client will have no problem doing that. Label of future dumpster pad should include greater detail to ensure there's adequate room for required screening and separation from the abutting sidewalks and parking area. We are providing a potential loading, potential dumpster pad location and it would have to take up three spots. We, we don't plan on having a dumpster pad, but if it ever came to that and if, and if the commission required, this is the location that we would have to put it.
And there's enough room for the enclosure and some landscaping around it?
Um, it would be, it would be a fenced enclosure only.
Because it's supposed to have landscaping too, according to the code.
In front of it? Oh, right, right, so like, you mean the back, we could easily provide in the back. We could provide, we'd have to take the sidewalk out, but we could provide on the other side by putting a small landscape island.
Yeah, and you're losing half that other space that you're not showing anyway, so.
Right. Yeah, that's the three spots that I referred to earlier.
Right, so.
Yeah, we could make a landscape island there if needed. But we don't, we don't plan to have a dumpster pad. But that was a request by the commi, by the staff to show a location of a potential one. Following notes should also be included in full construction details and not provided at this time. Detail of the dumpster pad enclosure and screening thereof shall require an amendment approval to the site plan from the neuroplanning and zoning commission. A note has been added to sheet two point one one with that, with that note, note seventeen for your, for your review. Relocate the graded and graded and basin portion of the stormwater management area outside the required minimum twenty-foot, twenty-foot front landscape buffer area. The buffer area should also be landscaped accordingly to be consistent with the multiple standards and requirements of zoning six point two. The, the plan remains unchanged. The graded storm basin is developed site feature that does not provide the same visual context and planting required by the landscape buffer standards. The landscape buffer is required to provide a buffer and screening. So we revisited that. This was what you guys received before. We only had a few shrubs in the front area there and in the corner here and a couple eight back here. We've beefed it up a little more to provide shrubs along the entire basin, frontage and north side, and we also provided the dogwood in the front area here.
And the landscape buffer is about that grayed outline?
Correct.
That goes through the middle of the basin?
Right.
And your tree is right in the middle of the DOT sightline easement? So I don't think you can probably plant a tree there?
It, it's an overstorey tree, so it would be under, I mean, fully grown, yeah.
Have you looked at the sightline easement, document?
I'm, I'm assuming by your.
It may prohibit, it may prohibit trees.
I'll, I'll look into that. We can, we can easily relocate that off to the side and move some shrubs if need be.
So you're going to have one tree in front of the entire property, is that what you're proposing?
That, that is what we are proposing at this time, yes. Building and structures, floor plan consistent with zoning. We already went through that. We'll get you a layout of the existing floor plan prior to next public hearing. The plan needs to show in detail how exterior ADA access is proposed to provide elevation and construction details for the proposed ADA walkway ramps for each building. We did provide a ramp detail on the site plan two point one one. And as you saw earlier, we, we provided ramps for both buildings adequate for ADA slope. The proposed tank shown in building one, western elevation should be labeled on sheet two point one one. We, we labeled that on sheet two point one one. The elevation on sheet A two should be revised to refer to building number two. The elevation has been revised accordingly, see sheet A two. The western elevation on sheet A two is on the garage structure proposed to be removed, not building number two. My apologies for that, we did revise that. Ad notation referring to the location of the fuel oil storage in the basement of building one. A box note was put on sheet two point one one referring to the location of fuel oil storage within the basement of building one. No generators are proposed per the response to comments. Yes, the application, the applicant is requesting no generators as part of this project. The existing overhead power and communication line should be buried consistent with the standards of zoning. The applicant is not proposing the burying of existing overhead utility lines. Yeah, the applicant respectfully requests to maintain the existing utilities as is, with the exception of the water line, which we will be connecting into.
Well, we looked to bury them as, like, we're saying.
The, the regulation says that any new utilities must be underground.
But we do try to, when you're digging things up, it's a good time to be.
So technically, this is not a new utility, so.
The extent of landscaping section, the extent of existing trees along the street frontage does appear to be completely shown. Any tree removal should be detailed per zoning six points two point three as well as the existing and any proposed change to the perimeter tree line. The area of the proposed stormwater basin is in the front yard, appears to require removal and several evergreen trees, which is not detailed on sheet two point six one. The time we went out with surveys that those trees, I know they show up on Google Earth, but they're not there now. So my comments, the plans have been revised to show the removal, oh, no, my comment was that upon the time of application, the trees must have been cut down because there is locations of stumps in the front, but there, there's no trees and our surveys didn't pick up any trees. So I don't know if that was done, that must have been done prior to the application. It does show on Google Earth, so it must have been done within the year.
Only the way, they would have came out with your application anyway, so.
They would have what?
They would have come out with your application anyway, so.
Right, right, so they, they.
Again, we're losing the landscape buffer, which is required to be, try to retain what's existing that's been taken away and then augmented with new. So that's really the, the main part.
The trees, the trees up in this area are going to remain, let me see if I can get that. Let me go back for a minute. So there are trees existing up along the northern property line here and all three here is pretty heavily vegetated. Those will be maintaining. The, it looks like there was a tree somewhere in the front around here and that does appear to be removed within the last year of prior to this application. But these trees will be ma, will be maintained, they're pretty big.
Yeah, I'm not so worried about those as much as, because they're on the property line or off?
Um, it appears that they're like right on the property line.
Right, so they probably can't come out, but I was, it's, my comment is more about the frontage and the fact I saw them on the Google Earth.
Yeah, that's, and that's, I looked at Google Earth too, I'm like, maybe just he did a Google drive by. And yeah, I did see trees, but they are definitely not there now. I mean, if they, we feel that we're, we're providing enough shrubs in this area to, to at least block. There's an outlet control structure, I understand that that's probably not the best thing in the front yard, but it is a plastic one, it will be partially buried, you're not going to, you're not going to really see it, but we do provide evergreens in this area to block any.
I mean, if you had, you know, three or four trees across the front, it'd probably look a lot better than just one, or at least three. And the dogwoods are good.
Yeah, again, we, I'll check the, the sightline easement too, because that might be, that might affect the location of three trees as well, so. So you're, you're thinking more in that area?
Well, I mean, there's shrubs and there's trees, but you got one little dogwood, I mean, it's not, you know.
And what kind of long some?
Maybe something on the south side of the driveway.
Okay, moving on. I don't know, do you guys have any other questions? Should I keep going?
Yeah, keep going.
Existing horticultural plantings within the antically identified in regards to type, size and remaining or being removed. As seen in the building elevations on sheet A two, A two, the site lacks much of any interior landscaping, particularly foundation plantings. With the conversion to office, the site landscaping should be augmented as per the multiple standards in zoning six point two and seven point two point three and address the areas called out in comments, see below. So we did, we did go out, we had somebody go out there and identify the existing shrubs within the area of the building blocking the foundation wall. And we did identify them on the new planting plan. And we also added more along the, the building to cover the foundation a little more per the planist comments.
But you have nothing along the front, the, the east elevation of the front building. There's no landscaping there.
Um, looking.
I'm looking here, it shows a thirty, two thirty-six inch pines that aren't there, twenty-four inch boxwood that I didn't see. So there's, it indicates some existing.
Yeah, we didn't, we, we didn't provide.
Trees that are not there.
Right, we didn't, well, the ones that are, the ones that we show on that plan, I believe, are, are existing. We, I had, we had our landscape architect go out and, and take pictures and, and count them and get the size and get what they were and stuff. So the grayed outright, if you see the gray out plan, that, that is currently existing and.
What do you, what do you consider a thirty-six inch pine tree?
No, that, is that what it says? That, that might be, yeah, no, that's, that's not right. I'm not sure why that says that there.
There's not a thirty.
No, 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 there.
There may have been at some point.
Yeah, no, maybe that's where she, we saw, we saw the cut and we marked that up, but.
We need to look into that.
Okay, yeah, there's, there's no, there's definitely no tree there, but the, the shrubs in the front we're maintaining. We didn't add any more in the front. We added more on the, the southerly elevation and then the northerly elevation and to block the proposed AC units in this area for building one. The landscape, proposed site landscaping is minimal and not consistent with the standard requirements of zoning six point two, seven point two, three. For instance, no change to the plans are proposed. As previously mentioned, the existing foundation plantings have been documented. The landscape plan has been revised to provide more interior landscaping adjacent to the existing building. Trees and shrubs should be provided along parking areas, sidewalks between buildings and parking area and straddling the front entrance. The landscape plan has been revised to add trees and shrubs and have been added to the locations of concern. Planting should be provided in the front landscape buffer. We talked about that in length already. I will see what I can do with more trees. The landscape bed should be provided in combination with the dumpster enclosure per zoning. The dumpster par, pad area. The dumpster pad areas have been removed and replaced with residential trash recycling bins at each building. These bins will be stored on concrete pads and screened with planting and existing features from Monroe Turnpike.
Let's, let's back up.
Sure.
To the, your comment concerning the rear landscape buffer.
Right.
I know there's a considerable amount of vegetation there now, but.
Correct.
I drove in there tonight, and, you know, there's clear view of, of the residential properties behind this property.
Okay.
And, you know, part of the, the reason for the LOR zone is to create a buffer between the business and residential. Lower impact, commercial use, and, you know, we do have a greater setback between the zones.
Right, and the residential zone is here, this is an LOR district up here?
And that's another clarification I need, the backside, the west end of this property, in the application property, is, is LOR, correct?
Correct, yeah.
You're indicating it is RF one.
No, this is, this is, this side, yeah, I, I caught that too, that will be changed, but yeah, this is, this is supposed to all say LOR because it's, it is with our property is within the LOR district. Anything beyond that is an RF one, it, it's definitely a copy paste.
Even though that is, you know, vegetated area, wooded area, I think you need a little more screening type landscaping along that rear buffer.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll definitely look into that, we are proposing the reserve area, if, if the septic system ever fails, we've had to provide a reserve area, and it is within that area, but we could probably work around that, and I'll have. I'll have somebody go out there and take pictures to see exactly where it's, it's sparse, and we, I'll ask the client if he wants to.
I don't think it needs to be a full order, but I think you'd have to selectively place some landscaping in that, that rear yard area.
Okay.
Did you say the reserve is in the wooded area?
It's, it's right about, it's right on the northern part right here.
So to, to the reserve, would you have to cut down those some trees?
You, I'm not sure with the, the tree line, yeah, you'd probably have to cut within, I'm not sure what trees are out here, because when our surveys go out, they, they do the tree line, they don't actually shoot. Except for like the major ones in front here.
So I would suggest that the commission bear in mind that if, you know, obviously you don't need to preserve today, and hopefully never, but they did, I think you might wanna have a condition that you get this, that that comes back with regards to the buffer requirement. Because it would be affecting the, the rear buffer to that area. If it wasn't for the buffer, it wouldn't mean, mean that much, but because of the buffer, that's gonna, if it takes away trees, it's gonna change.
Look into the, excuse me, look into the possibility of shifting your reserve area a little bit to the east. Excuse me, and get it out of the, the landscape buffer.
Okay. All right, on to sidewalks. A concrete sidewalk should be provided across the front length of the property, parallel and through the full width of the driveway. Plan remains unchanged as the applicant does not desire to provide a sidewalk. The applicant is respectfully requesting not to provide a sidewalk across the front length of the property, so as to be consistent with the neighboring properties to the north and south.
Those properties probably will be developed.
Yes.
Probably will be sidewalks.
Yeah.
They, they are, they are currently developed, one's a dentist and one's a office space.
This is an insurance office.
Yeah, it's an insurance office.
Well, again, without a sidewalk project, the way to do it is to get sidewalks parcel by parcel.
And, and the MetroCog is currently going through a study of Monroe Turnpike. P O C D recommends sidewalks along frontage. There's funding available for town to go lead and complete sidewalk projects. And MetroCog's traffic evaluation is also looking at sidewalks. When we went to the public meetings, there were several business owners and residents that got up and asked for sidewalks along corridors, so they are definitely recommended. What happens is, that's just the point, there's no walks. As development comes in, little sections of walks go in, and then if you get enough of them, then the town can look at doing a project where we will go out and get funding. And through Loxip or other funded programs that are available to do that, and then we'll fill in all the gaps, eventually, at some point, we fill in the gaps, and then you got sidewalks all the way up and down the street. They're putting in sidewalks, the state's putting them in around the roundabout, and they're running them all the way up to town hall. So they also recognize the value and importance of that other mode of transportation. Matter of fact, federal funding even comes with that requirement at this point. And I think that's why the state's doing it, because they, they're kind of being pushed to include other modes of transportation, pedestrian access.
No, that's, that's fine, it's the information we need. Dire, the, the commission will have to deliberate on that. If that were to become a condition of approval, is that going to be a problem?
I wouldn't know at this time, he did seem, he did seem hesitant on providing like walks with dead end, and.
But now you understand from what our town engineer just explained the purpose for it.
You're gonna fill that many gaps in? I, I can certainly ask, I can certainly ask, I'm not, I'm not sure what he'll, he will say, but.
The less gaps we have to fill in, the more likely to get the funding.
All right, no, I understand, I completely understand. I'm, I'm a middle man here, sorry guys. All right. Note the material specifications of the monument panels and main support board, as well as a color specification, not white for the main support board, which the sign panels would be attached to. Signs are required to be detailed as part of the site plan application for zoning. Six point three point one A and seven point two point twelve and seven point three point one E. We updated the monument sign detail to provide color and material for main support board. That detail is provided on sheet two point one one.
Can you pull it up on that?
Uh, yeah, I would have to, this, sorry, this is the presentation, I'd have, I do have the actual plans as well. So we're providing a, a two panel tenant sign with a stone base and approximately four foot high at the highest point.
Any lighting associated with it?
We are, we are not proposing.
Is an LED strip in the top?
Yeah.
Under the cap?
I did not.
LED strip under the top cap.
Yeah, that's. But we did add the color and the material. Yeah, sorry, I, I was not involved in designing this sign, but yes, I guess it's an LED strip. Quoting the response comments, no wall signs proposed, as such, the following note should be added, that, that note, we did add on the two point one one. Construction details for the following should be provided, a handicap signpost with plastic sleeves. The detail should be revised to specify a blue plastic sleeve, that, we did that, and the detail is on sheet two point one one. Then now we go to the town engineering comments, a report from the health department should be provided. I issued their comments, and their comments are also part of this sheet that you guys got prior, and, and, but I did issue the actual official. Report from the health department as part of your submission package today.
Did you do the soil testing for the reserve area already?
We did not, but I spoke with the health department, and Rich Jackson said that that could easily be a condition of approval.
So now we don't really know where it could be, not be.
Right, and, and now I'm gonna relocate it, so, I mean, we have a note, we provided a note on the plan that said that it can't be. Prior to construction, let me, let me pull it up, sorry. Said, proposed reserve leaching area, soil testing will be conducted within the area and submitted to the town engineer and health department as a condition of approval.
What happens if it doesn't prove after you get a reserve area?
Let me have a whole nother issue. But, I mean, the soils out there, Rich Jackson said that, that they were, they were gray.
I'm not overly worried about it, that doesn't mean anything.
Right, but we can't, we wouldn't be able to, to get this finalized or approved until, or, or into construction or pre-construction until we provide.
Now, this is the kind of issue that we come across a lot, and to me, regulations, this is stuff you're supposed to know in granting approval.
I agree.
We, it, if it.
There's plenty of time.
We, it's plenty of time, I can actually go out there in the next, before the next hearing, and I can provide that if you guys.
If this application has to go to ARB, it's gonna push it to our next meeting at least, which is three weeks from now.
Okay.
So hopefully within the next week or two, you'll be able to get a test pit done, and have that information for us at the next meeting.
We think about the ARB, because ARB is gonna be a problem if it's the ARB, because they don't meet in August. You wanna go with me, you're just doing a flat deck? I mean, it's up to you if, if you feel that should go. I mean.
What, what is that?
Well, they're steps, and they're gonna replace it with a deck and, and the handicap ramp. The handicap ramps are gonna be more obvious than, than the deck, so, I don't know, I mean, that's, it's a structure, but you have to decide if that's. Have a look at the code to see what it says.
If it, if, if it does not have to go to ARB.
Because they can't go to September.
Then I would not push for it to, it's only a ramp.
So you can continue on with that.
What are you gonna put on the front face of the deck?
It's kind of similar to what we did for twenty-seven Main Street, it will have a railing, a wood railing.
Yeah, it's more.
In other words, the deck is up off the ground.
Yeah.
The ramp goes off to the side.
Yeah.
When someone's looking from the street or looking from the driveway, what are they looking at?
It, it'll be raised with poles, yeah, you'll look, you'll, you'll see underneath it's.
You have the detail of it.
Yeah, I have the detail of the ramp.
Because I think that's.
Yeah.
That's.
Oh yeah, so I, he was asking about how it would look underneath it.
Yeah, I think that's something the commission needs to know, because that's what ARB would be interested in, what, what's this thing gonna look like? I don't think we want a.
So it looks, it looks, yeah, it looks like this, and it, the level landing will be.
So you got the deck to the right of that.
Well, yeah, this will be, this, yeah, it'll be a full extension of what this is.
So what's underneath the deck, I mean, that's the front of a commercial building, and that's just gonna be open under there? Is it just gonna be dirt, you're gonna look through, because I think the commission's gonna wanna know that, because that's not gonna look so great in the front of a commercial building.
I mean, we do, we do have.
Usually a ramp like that in a commercial building would have like a stone, you know, would be some kind of a wall or something.
We're, we're actually proposing that whole area to be a, a concrete sidewalk, so, yeah, nothing's gonna grow under there, there's gonna be no dirt or anything, so.
Nothing, I mean, you got a, you got a wood ramp coming down.
Yeah.
Sitting on a concrete wall.
Sitting on a concrete wall.
Concrete wall in front.
Right.
Does the commission wanna see something like that? I mean, that, I'm just, just pointing it out, that if you don't have ARB looking at this, that's something that you guys should be focusing on. Beyond that, I have no comment.
Well, you can't, obviously you can't plant it if it's concrete, but maybe you could look at some type of screening or lattice or something.
Facing of some sort.
Yes.
Okay.
Kind of keep airflow. We can talk about that too, Casey.
Yeah, we could, you guys can.
Sounds good. Where were we? Site, the site layout has been revised, provided additional room for the SU thirty truck to successfully exit the site with three point turn maneuver. Let me show you the.
We'll, we'll review that off.
Okay. All right, so although not needed for drainage purposes, curbing should be provided in all areas other than the runoff area east of the dumpster enclosure, in order to control the layout. The applicant respectfully requests that curbing only be included in the areas where stormwater drainage is required. So I think Scott, what you are asking. Is even this, this location here to be all curb?
Well, typically, the, the commission requires that all paved areas have curbing unless there's a reason such as sheet flow into a water quality area. So I'm pointing out that without curbing, you got cars pulling in, and they're gonna, you know, the wheels are gonna go off the edge of pavement, it's gonna be uneven. Line you got along there, so I'm just pointing out that the requirement is that typically paved areas are curved.
This area, this is where the handicap spaces, so we're, to a client, if you, if you could bring it up to, to where the ADA space is.
So that would be the whole site, like along the other side where the building is?
Up here as well.
Well, you know, we don't allow wheel stops.
No, well, I understand that.
So we have curves, to keep cars in the designated parking area. Right now, there's nothing to keep cars from just driving off onto the lawn.
Right. Okay, I'll make a note of it. Show top of ramp landing with elevations on building two.
Yeah, that's all stuff.
Yeah, we updated that. The missing four sixty-nine counter, I updated that.
On the drainage, what I didn't put there, and Will reminded me, is you didn't actually give me the couch for the water quality volume?
Oh, okay, the, we definitely, we definitely designed it so the top of frame is higher than the actual water quality volume, but I'll get you those guys. The anti-tracking pad, we, we put in the location that you asked, you might, you might want, when looking at, you might wanna modify. Additional cell fence should be indicated on the northeast corner of the rear parking lot. Additional cell fence has been provided off the northeast corner of the rear parking lot and along the northerly side of the side entrance as requested, see sheet two point three one. Details.
The rest of it's housekeeping stuff.
Right. And then everything's, yeah, DOT acceptance, DOT acceptance for traffic conditions, providing vacation, the CT DOT highway encouragement, acknowledge, acknowledge. And then the site area map I updated for you to see and made it more clear where the municipal conveyance system was outletting. So you, you can see where we're connecting into.
We'll talk about that.
Yeah. Then the health department comments, the two existing buildings must be connected to city water, city water line, we are providing. But the existing building one is proposed to be connected to the municipal water line, and building two will maintain its current connection from building one. The existing well must be abandoned, we are providing that. Soil testing must be conducted to establish a reserve area, I, I will go out there myself and provide soil testing and get the data to Scott and the commission. And the three inch line underneath the parking lot must be replaced with two inch Schedule forty, we did actually do that, and that is provided on the, on the utility plan.
Do you really wanna run that water service underneath the basin?
We. We will, we'll maintain the coverage that, that it's required, but yeah.
You gotta always run it deep.
Yeah, and the client has no problem with that.
And I would suggest you put a note on there that that be installed after the basin.
Okay.
I mean, you're introducing water into the ground at a point where you might have minimal cover on your water line, and that could be a problem. I guess if you go deep enough.
Gotta be four feet deep.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, I guess it could be done if it's.
So that concludes my presentation.
With regards to the ARB, it does require going to the ARB. The language is, the ARB shall review all applications submitted to the commission for site plan, especially except for permanent volume of construction, reconstruction, expansion, addition. Or alteration of non-residential and multifamily building structures related to site development. However, the commission does have the discretion, and may determine referral to ARB is not warranted or necessary due to the limited or diminished nature of an application. And doing so in the commission's estate reasons and making such determination. So you can determine that it doesn't need to, because it's really just focused on those, those few things. I mean, ARB's review does go beyond just buildings and structures, it also looks at the parking lot, the loading, and the landscaping appropriateness related to architecture. But again, the buildings are the buildings, they're there, they're not changing, it's really just the two handic. But again, the buildings are the buildings, they're there, they're not changing, it's really just the two handicap ramps and the access to the door. You can determine what you want to do.
Well, I want to determine that right now. Did anyone hear what Will said? This is, this is a minimal issue, it's only the handicap ramp that would require this to go to the architectural review board. The buildings are what they are, they are not proposing any changes to the buildings, other than adding this ramp to the rear building. So, do we send it to ARB, or do we consider it a minor impact?
Are, are, are you doing something in the front of the building also?
No.
No, I mean.
It's only in the rear.
Well, building two, we will, we will send the deck out to for ADA accessibility.
Right, so would, would that necessarily have to go to ARB also?
That's all part of this same question.
I mean, to me, it's.
I think they're minor, that's.
I agree, I think, I think they're minor if they can come back with something that shows what it's going to look like, that, I think that's fine.
And I'll, we'll work with Will to, to see what you guys really want.
So, I think it's minor.
Michael? Alright, so, we'll, we'll consider it as a commission, not through ARB. Alright, Mr. Burchett, you ready for questions? We'll, we'll see what the commission has on their mind.
I'm ready.
I'm going to start with you.
I definitely feel the, the ramp should be covered, that, that side, I do think it's kind of. I'm going to put that time and effort into it, I definitely feel that something should go there. The, the area for the, for the truck, Scott, you're going to work with him about. I kind of agree with you, I think that's.
Yeah, we'll typically have a, a work session, meeting, and we'd go over those type of items, and I'd point out and show them what I'm looking at, and I try to move him toward opening that area up.
There's also a section here that says you potentially could, a restaurant in there? Something you're looking for? And then you also say that there's going to be absolutely no outside storage? Is that correct?
That's correct, but the restaurant is not.
It was not here?
That's, yeah, that's not proposed as part of this project.
They wouldn't have the parking or the stuff.
Yeah, I was going to say, it doesn't seem like.
And this zone doesn't allow outside storage.
Okay, I was going to, okay.
I, I agree with Commissioner Mayuni about covering the ramp.
The side of it.
The side of the ramp only, because it's pretty easily visible, you don't want to see any animal get under there, maybe during the winter.
Right.
It also is more easily cleaned during the fall for leaves and stuff falling under there.
Makes sense.
Just, it, it makes the owner's job easier, also provides the community with something that looks a little bit better. I appreciate you bringing up the sign detail before, just so I can take a look at it. My final question would be, how much traffic does the applicant envision going in and out on a daily basis? What kind, what kind of tenants is the applicant looking for that would use the space? I, I know there's no.
Right.
Misagreement or anything like that.
It probably, probably be similar to like a dentist or a doctor, like office type style, so, I'm, I'm thinking, I don't think there's going to be a lot of traffic in and out. And like I said, the, the trucks that come in and out are probably just going to be FedEx-related or mail trucks.
Casey, I think we need to declare this is not for a doctor or dentist, this is for a professional office.
Professional office, yeah, yeah.
Because that would require higher parking count.
Okay, so no.
Okay, so not dentists, okay.
So it's just, yeah, just professional.
So, mostly the people who will be parking there are people who work in the offices?
Right, correct.
And maybe if they have like an interview where somebody needs to go in there for something.
It depends on what tenant might be, I mean, obviously, if it's like a real estate office, that would be different than a lawyer's office perhaps, or an accountant's office. So until you get a tenant, but the point.
And how many spaces are proposed?
Right now, there are nineteen.
Nineteen and one ADA spot?
And one ADA spot, but that's part of the nineteen.
Okay.
The town requires thirteen for this square footage, and it may change once we figure out the floor area, but right now, we're using the livable area, which is the extent on your tax card, but we'll find out if that changes with a floor plan.
Now, if you had twenty spots, you would have to have two compliant handicap spots.
Correct, if it goes over, yeah.
No, it's twenty-five.
Twenty.
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
So if you had twenty-six spaces, you need another.
Right, yeah, because we did actually, in the first submission, we did have, I think, two more spaces or one more space, and we only needed one still, so that, that's correct, twenty-five.
And you said no generators, right?
No, no generators for part of this project.
And, did you say that there was a fuel tank already on site?
There's a fuel storage tank, yeah, currently on the side here, and it's covered with a.
Now, is that, is that blocked off from the parking lot?
Yeah, well, it, it definitely will be with the, the ramp that we're going to propose, and we also provide planting in that area to, to, to further cover it.
He, he was asking about protection, not just some visual.
Right, because if, if the pavement extended, if the parking lot extended the paving, it would be easy for a car to just drive in.
Yeah, that, that ramp is still going to have to be there, unfortunately, with the elevations, it has to be about twenty feet long, so, that's why I'm concerned with the angle of the, the loading, because the loading will be right in front of the ramp unless we angle that at the last five feet, you know, which kind of would be weird, but doable.
Okay, that's all I had.
Are there any outbuildings in addition to the garage that's going to be demolished?
No, no, it's just, just the garage. All the, all the porches and the, the canopies and stuff that are existing to the other two buildings will ma, will be maintained.
And they're attached, I mean, is this, is there something that I saw that made me think that there was a garage and also another separate building?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, okay, that's, that's fine. I'm a little concerned about the location of the handicap space, because it will be serving both buildings, two thirty-three and also two thirty-five?
Right, and I mean, the ramp.
I guess it's as close as you can get it, but I'm a little concerned.
Yeah, to the ramp. So, yeah, so they're going to come in and come up the ramp here to get to this entrance, and then they'll go over here to get, it is kind of centralized for that, for those two ramps. We did have it up against here, but unfortunately, there's no, if we were to have a designated loading space, this is the only place that adequately exits a, a truck.
And, and can you tell me the distance between that ramp, excuse me, oh yeah, the ramp, the L-shaped ramp?
Yeah.
And the handicap space, how many feet someone would have to walk from that space?
So, so this is a twenty-four foot drive aisle, so it's probably twenty-six or twenty-seven feet, roughly?
That's far. As I said, it's probably the best you could do, but it seems far for someone who may not be in a wheelchair, but who may be disabled and having to walk far. I, it's just mental, not that you can do anything for it. I concur with the, having more street trees, if we can work that out with DOT and the sight lines, and I think that that would definitely be an improvement. And also screening the, the ramp.
Was that last one? Oh, screening it, yeah.
And that's it.
My only two concerns are, because they've been on my list, and the stuff is, I may have to put the sidewalks in.
Oh, yeah.
In front of it.
Sidewalks.
Yeah, sidewalks and the curbing, those are the only two issues that I have.
I agree with the sidewalk, I forgot to mention that.
We've got knocked off the two things that I had still, so I agree with everybody that's been said, you're right.
What was that, sidewalk?
The sidewalk and the curbing.
Curbing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll second that also. I don't have nothing else.
Okay. Just a couple of questions and comments. Fix that zone designation on your site plan.
Yeah, I, I did that, actually, when I was looking at the, at the plan, I did it tonight, so, sorry you didn't get that, I didn't bring that change in.
I had a question about the drainage on the back, I'll call it the back parking lot, the one on the north side of the property. Right now, it looks like you have, you have it designed so that it sheet flows to the northeast corner of the lot, and you have a small stone trench there?
Yeah, so, so this parking lot will sheet flow and hit the curb that we're proposing here, and run along the curb, fill up into this like level spreader, it's a two-foot by two-foot-deep level spreader, and then it'll spill over into the swale that goes into the water quality basin.
The volume of that trench won't even handle an inch of rain.
No, it's just, it's just a level spreader, it'll.
You're not worried about erosion between the end of that spreader and the, and the basin?
Well, the, the level spreader is for erosion, because if we didn't have this and it just bombed out, you have a concentrated flow at the curb, and that's when erosion would occur, this is, this is creating more of a, of a even spill over, over that concentrated area.
So you have no concerns then about.
I do not know.
Erosion in that location.
Right. I mean, we, we originally did provide.
What's that?
Wouldn't it be easier to, to extend the level spreader and plant it, so that it has a bigger area to go over rock?
I think, you know, in, in a, in a good downpour, you're going to have a significant amount of water running off that corner of the parking lot. I just see a potential issue there in the future.
I can, I can work with you, Scott, and we can look at it even more, but, yeah, I, we can extend it if, if need be. But I, I, I feel like that, that's a lot better than just having nothing. We, we did originally propose a, kind of like an apron here, but it kind of looked goofy, so, and it, and it kind of diverted the water away from the pond, so by now, the water will fill up and then evenly spread out and then come down into the.
It'll probably be okay with the showing, you know, you could look at maybe a jail grid under the grass in that area to hold it.
Okay.
The only other issues I had, we already discussed, looking to possibly relocate the reserve area, and then supplement the rear and back yard landscape setback areas.
Yeah.
I think that was everything I had. Anything else from staff?
No, I mean, obviously, we're going to have to review the, and confirm the revision.
Okay, oh, and the other, the bond. The town had, town engineer had recommended a bond, it's about seven thousand dollars.
I didn't get any pushback from the client, so I'm assuming it's, it's okay, but I will, I will confirm with him, but I think, I think he's okay with that.
Anything else? I guess we'll see you then on the twenty-fourth. What's that? It's a site plan.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, deliberations and determinations. Eight, extensions. Yeah, we have a letter from Shipman and Goodwin. Subdivision was initially approved in September two thousand and seven, granted a five-year extension to September two thousand and twelve, and another four-year extension, and right now, they are good until September thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen. That also pretty much relates to their site development plan. So they have a subdivision and a special exception permit that they would like to get a four-year time extension request. Will, what was this document that you?
I just gave you tonight a, a table which shows all the different permits and the history and the, outlining, you know, what was the permit given, what, what's the remaining issues that are on them and the timeframe. So the, the ones that you're really considering right now are the last two rows of that table? They also are concurrently going to the wetlands for extension within the wetlands.
And apparently, we have someone for the applicant, we usually don't get that for extensions.
You did such a fine job, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to be quiet going through the, the approvals. For the record, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Gresta, Mr. Schatzline, and Madam Clerk. For the record, my name is Chris Smith, and I am a land use attorney and a partner at the law firm of Shipman and Goodwin, and I appear before you this evening along with Chris Steiner, Cottage Street LLC, who is the owner of the subject property for which the approvals were granted back on September thirteenth, two thousand and seven, which is almost a year to the date that Lehman Brothers happened. So we did receive these approvals, there were three zoning approvals, as Will has outlined in his grid, and two of which, well, there was a zone change, and there was a subdivision as well as the special exception site development plan, and the zone change obviously doesn't have any time period, the other two do. As outlined in the letter and in Will's grid, we are here this evening seeking an extension, a four-year extension under what's referred to, well, as Public Act eleven oh five, and that was the home builder's rescue bill that was done in two thousand and eleven that kicked everything out four years to accommodate the approvals that were in existence, but not being able to be built because of the economy. And, and then we're also seeking a four-year extension for the subdivision under section eight dash twenty-six C, because we've used up everything but four years of that statutory timeframe, and then with the special exception site development plan under eleven oh five, we're just seeking confirmation that we do have the four years with that, whereby everything would expire relative to the subdivision and special exception approval on September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, I can't even believe I'm saying that, but, but that's what we're looking for from the commission, and we would respectfully submit to the commission, there hasn't been a substantial or material change relative to the development, there's, has been any activity out in that area, certainly nothing to do with the property. And again, it's a fourteen-lot cluster subdivision, and I think about a hundred and twenty-five acres, so it was a rather large piece. As outlined in Will's grid, there is a open space component, there is a trail component, none of that has been done simply because we haven't started to build. If my client does secure building permits, then they would have to convey the open space over and whatnot. They did record the map and have been, being taxed fourteen lots that, you know, full, full rate for the fourteen lots, and nothing's happened out there. And again, we're hoping that the commission will see fit to grant these extensions, and hopefully, things will turn around enough where my client can go forward within the time period, and if not, then we may not, we won't have the approvals because they will have expired. But I'd like to thank Will for working with me and, and my client and coming up with the grid, and, and with Scott, we have to go to wetlands next. We're scheduled later this month, a couple of weeks for that, so.
Same thing for a four-year extension?
I think there, it's the five years that we're looking for, because we had the five, the initial five, and then we had the four years under Public Act eleven oh five, and now we're. And, and we're into that, but that would kick it out, and there was an appeal there, so there's a difference in the timeframes that are involved. But I think Will, in his, his grid here, it's, it is accurate, it indicates that we're going to be seeking the five-year extension for wetlands, because we did receive the Public Act extension for four years. That's in the second, second item here, and then. So again, respectfully request on behalf of my client that the commission consider granting the additional timeframe, statutory timeframe for the subdivision, and then recognizing, confirming the four years under eleven oh five for the special exception. And you're right, Mr. Chairman, normally, we would come, but it's just important to my client, we assume, presume, everything would happen, we're here, if there's any questions, but also just to explain it to the commission, because there were multiple approvals that this commission had approved way back when in two thousand and seven.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
We can just vote on this now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Chair, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve a four-years time extension for subdivision number zero seven dash four, file number one two four two C, eighty-two Cottage Street and forty-two San Barrods, as well as a special exception permit. Four dash oh seven dash S, file number one two four four two C, eighty-two Cottage Street and forty-two San Barrods, again, four years.
Sandbar Road, again, four-year extension for both.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Who are we seating tonight?
Kathy.
Kathy, you're seated.
Who seconded that?
Michael.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Call the roll, starting with Kathy.
Lindstrom, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Townsend, yes.
Porter, yes.
Yes.
Thank you again. Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Next up, bond releases and reductions. We have none, modifications, none, meeting minutes. July twentieth. They weren't on the desk tonight?
I don't know.
They made it through email.
There might be hard copy. I thought there was a hard copy.
Yeah, they were emailed, and it's a hard copy.
Can I have the one from Paul?
Meeting minutes?
Twenty. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody has it in for you, Kathy.
I gave it to her. I was in here, sorry.
Exactly. All right, take a minute to look at it, if you haven't looked at the ones that were emailed. Then we have Porter, O'Reilly, Ambrose. Kathy, you were here, so you can vote, and Townsend was absent, so you understand. We have a motion?
We'll accept the meeting minutes, July twentieth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any comments, additions, corrections?
I don't have any.
Now, call the roll, starting with Kathy.
Lindstrom, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Townsend abstained.
Porter, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Okay, next up, application deliberations, determinations. SDP two thousand and seventeen dash oh two, file number one-two-two thirty-five Corporate Drive. All right, this is use of a vacant warehouse to stage and test equipment. Office space, store eighty, maximum of eighty-six C containers, installing a wooden fence dumpster enclosure, starting with gravel base for storage of the storage containers. Evergreen plantings along the west side of the, or the east side of the parking area to screen the outside storage, repairing and repaving portions of Corporate Drive. We have Porter, Ambrose, O'Reilly. Jonathan, you were seated on this. Should we seat someone for Paul?
No, Paul's absent.
Just leave him as absent? Okay.
Kathy, you're not seated for this petition.
So, Jonathan, you're seated for this. All right. Chair will entertain a motion.
We'll accept SDP two thousand and seventeen dash R two, file number one-two-two as draft, it's thirty-five Corporate Drive.
Ambrose, second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
No, I believe they've covered everything that we had to cover.
Yeah, all of the conditions in here are what we discussed with the placement of the single row and double stacked row of containers.
Right.
The landscaping, everything is as we discussed.
Right.
So, if there's no further questions, I'll call the roll, starting with Jonathan.
Form Kelly, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Townsend abstained.
Porter, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Motion passes. All right, if the commission is so inclined, I would like to deliberate and possibly vote on RAA two thousand and seventeen dash seven, the easement right-of-way application that we heard this evening. uses of properties impractical because of the required setbacks. Any further questions or discussion? Kathy, you are seated.
I, yes, I am.
You are seated for this.
Yeah, I am, okay.
All right, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the RAA two thousand and seventeen dash oh seven, file number nine-nine-nine-zero-E, easement right-of-way setbacks.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. If there's no further discussion, I will call the roll, starting with Kathy.
Lindstrom, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Townsend, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Thank you.
Nothing here, nothing here.
Regulation review amended.
Can you amend that motion to include an effective date? And the effective date would be, in my recognition, some of the calendar.
Today's the third.
So, what are you looking for? Two weeks?
Okay, today's the third, the fourteenth of August.
Fourteenth of August?
Motion to amend the approval of RAA two thousand and seventeen dash oh seven, file number nine-nine-nine-zero-E, easement right-of-way setbacks to an effective date of August fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Motion, we have a second. Want to vote on it again, Will?
Yes.
All right, everyone understands that we're amending the motions out of an approved date. All right.
Ambrose, yes.
Townsend, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Thank you.
Nothing else we should be voting on tonight, right? Nope. Okay. Correspondence, other received. This is related to a special exception permit application for one-twenty-four Enterprise Drive. We got an email telling us that they were formally withdrawing the application, but they will be refiling shortly. We saw that on the list, that's why it's not there. Work sessions for the subdivisions, I think, or the application divisions, I think we're going to just table that for another couple of weeks because I know I'm away, and some other people are also away, so we'll discuss that again in our next meeting, maybe set something up towards the end of the month. Anyone else have something to report or anything to report?
No.
No? Staff have anything to report? No. That's it?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.